Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Kent County Board of Commissioners meeting for Thursday, November 4th. We're going to call the meeting to order. It looks like we have a few people still coming in. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Commissioners Woodin.
Here.
Womack.
Here.
Teal.
Here.
Vice Chair Steck.
Here.
Commissioners Sparks.
Present.
Skaggs. Commissioner Skaggs. Commissioners Ponstein.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
McLeod.
Here.
LaGrande.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Hennessy. Commissioner Hennessy. Commissioners Green.
Here.
Burl.
Here.
Bolkowski.
Present.
Brevi.
Here.
Antor.
Here.
Chair Bolter.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have 17 members present, two absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to invocation for tonight, and I'll call Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. So this week, we were once again reminded how tenuous life can be with the passing of Deputy Dave Cook, who passed away from COVID complications. So in his honor, I would ask that you please join me with a moment of silence.
Now, if you would join me in an invocation. Lord God, Heavenly Father, we acknowledge you as the Creator of all things, and we accept your steadfast promise that you are about restoring your kingdom here on earth as it is in heaven. As we approach the final months of this year, and as we consider all of the work over the past months, and we busy ourselves with our plans for yet another year, and are absorbed with our own efforts and agendas and master plans, as we note that we've built buildings, we've established organizations, we've set strategic plans, we've negotiated contracts, and we've hired new leaders, we've worked hard to assure that things go as planned and that our grand designs are all realized. And yet, Lord, we are confronted daily with the reality that, in fact, we are in control of so little. We seem to confidently work our own exercise regimes in our practicing of our healthy diets, and yet in an instant, our bodies can be attacked with cancer, disease, viruses, bacteria, accidents, and injuries. We proudly secure our educations, and we do our studies and our homework. We think we're smart and accomplished and intelligent, and yet our minds can yield in a minute to depression, anxiety, Alzheimer's, psychosis, and substance use. We wake up each day feeling secure in the presence of our families and our friends, only to be confronted with death, and loss, and broken relationships, and separations. We go out into our cities and our country, and we feel safe and comfortable, and yet on a moment's notice, these too can fall away with divisions, and hatred, racial strife, crime, and injustice. We are certainly proud of our country and claim it to be the safest and best in the world, and yet we are repeatedly shocked with acts of terrorism, biological threats, nuclear threats, and economic and ecological disaster threats. And yet, Lord, in spite of all of that, we hold fast to the promise that you are, in all things, able to accomplish all that is possible, and in your grace, even our inadequate efforts are used to advance the cause of justice, to promote peace, security, and liberty. And so, Lord, we press in our hope and in our confidence, and ask for a deeper insight, a more seasoned wisdom, a greater patience, a stronger measure of resilience, a more genuine humility, a greater resolve to put the cause of community ahead of our own personal wants and agendas. And above all, we pray, Lord, that you will use what we have here, and what we do here, and what we accomplish here, to promote the well-being of all of those over whom you've asked us to govern. And we pray this, Lord, in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Steck. We are on to item five of our agenda, Special Order of Business, and today we have the 2022 Budget Public Hearing. Is Jeff giving that, or you? Yep. Al Vanderburgh will present to us.
Chair Bolter, Kent County Board of Commissioners, it is my pleasure to present the 2022 Kent County Budget. To date, the Finance and Physical Resources Committee set the 2022 budget guidelines on May 18. The majority of the 10-1 budgets were approved by the Board on September 9. The CIP plan was approved on September 21. The dedicated millage tax levies were adopted by the Board on September 23. The proposed budget was presented on October 5 and October 19, and the Finance and Physical Resources Committee acted on the proposed budget on November 2. State statute requires a public hearing to be held on the budget prior to its passage. The purpose of this meeting is to provide a forum for the public to review and comment on the proposed budget. The 2022 budget exemplifies the county's mission and was developed with the Board's strategic priorities in mind. Through responsible budgeting and thoughtful planning, Kent County government is committed to providing resources and services that promote a high quality of life for the entire community. For 2022 total revenues, excluding inter-fund transfers, are at $438 million, $177.5 million, or 34.4% of all revenue comes from taxes, $163.6 million, of which is from current property tax collections, the county's largest single revenue source. State taxable value is up 4.5% in 2021, and is estimated to increase to $27.6 billion, or 4.0% for 2022. The final state taxable value won't be known until spring of 2022. The state equalized value is up 6.9% in 2021, and the gap between SEV and STV is 77.9%, the largest since the start of Prop. A. This is caused by low inflation rates, a strong real estate market, and the limitations on taxable value growth under Proposal A. The millage rate is down 0.9% from 6.2100 in 2020 to 6.1521 in 2021 due to the Headley Amendment. This is the same rate used for the 2022 budget, but won't be finalized until spring of 2022. Looking at the expenditures, the all-funds expenditures budget excluding inter-fund transfers is $454.8 million, 58.9% of which is invested in judicial, public safety, and social services. The total budget includes $199.6 million for the general fund budget and 1,837 full-time equivalent positions. $99.8 million of the proposed budget is invested in public safety services to preserve and protect the safety and security of county residents, provide criminal and civil enforcement, maintain a communication center to facilitate emergency call answering, provide a safe and secure correctional facility, humane sheltering for stray animals, and to assist in the acquisition of fire trucks, maintenance, and insurance for participating local units of government. $52.3 million of the proposed budget is invested in judicial services to administer justice according to existing laws and operates in an efficient and effective manner. Here's civil, criminal, appeals, probate, and traffic cases, handles decadent estates, guardianships, conservatorships, mental health, and trust matters, seeks justice for all victims of crime and children in need, and investigates and makes recommendations regarding child custody, parenting time, child support, and child medical support. $113.7 million of the proposed budget is invested in social services to promote self-reliance and safeguard the physical, emotional, and social well-being of county residents by influencing policies, providing education, programs, and services, and responding to the needs of vulnerable populations. $93 million of the proposed budget is allocated to general government and debt to plan, provide, and manage efficient, reliable, and innovative services to county clients so they may effectively fulfill their mission to the public and to meet all debt obligations. $24.9 million of the proposed budget is invested in cultural activities to enhance the quality of life in Kent County by providing recreation space for citizens to gather for public and private events. This includes weddings, company picnic's, family reunions, nonprofit fundraisers, golf, and outstanding trail system for hiking, biking, walking, and running, and a wide range of other special events that bring our community together. $12.5 million of the proposed budget is allocated to community and economic development to work in partnership with local agencies to develop greater economic opportunities, promote tourism, community development, provide convention facilities, and improve the quality of life for all county residents. $58.6 million of the proposed budget is allocated to public works to provide stormwater drainage, solid waste, and recycling services to county residents. This function helps to conserve natural resources and promotes a healthy, vibrant, and sustainable community. In summary, the budget continues the county's commitment to a high quality of life for its citizens. The budget supports the economic prosperity of the county, and it adheres to sound fiscal management and board policies. The budget invests in services to improve efficiency and to provide service delivery excellence to the citizens of Kent County, and most importantly, the budget is balanced. So what's next? After today's public hearing on the budget, the Board will be asked to act on the budget at its meeting on Thursday, November 18 at 8:30 a.m. The proposed budget is available to view online at accesskent.com. I thank the Board for all of your hard work and due diligence that has been put into the review of this budget. I also thank all the department directors for their hard work developing the budget, the budget review teams for their time and due diligence, Jeff and Marvin and the Fiscal Services Team for coordinating the process. And now, I'd like to turn it over to you, Madam Chair, to open the public hearing on the budget. Thank you.
Public hearing on the budget is now open. Do we have anyone that has any questions or comments? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Al, you mentioned, or showed on that clip, there was a little tiny number for farmland preservation, and I thought we were zeroed out on any contributions. Do you know where that would come from?
Is that for the administration of the program? Yes, so we're not contributing to purchasing any of the development rights. The program is set up not to do that, but we do fund a portion of staff to help run the process.
Okay. I just assumed that was an additional responsibility for our staff, not earmarked, but we can talk about that later. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have public comment for the public hearing of the budget today that was just presented? All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing for the budget, and we'll move on to item 5B, Ready by Five. We have a presentation on that from Anne Marie Valdez and Heather Boswell.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Anne Marie Valdez, president of First Steps, and really want to extend a thank you to Chair Bolter for requesting that we present on the Ready by Five Early Childhood Millage this evening. So it's a big honor to be here. There are many new faces here among the commissioners, and it is also an honor to kind of bring everyone up to date on where we're at with the Early Childhood Millage. So we'll get started. I also wanted to acknowledge that two of my Board co-chairs are here, Lou Chamberlain and Kate Walters, from our very supportive Board. So a little bit about First Steps. First Steps Kent was developed out of the Kent County Family and Children's Coordinating Council. The Kent County Board of Commissioners has a long history of investing in evidence-based early childhood programs, recognizing the lasting benefits to young children and the entire community. And I'd like to take a moment to mention that the work that we do is really essential to thinking about intervening early for our youngest children, making sure that they're healthy and ready for kindergarten, and many of the milestones to come to reach their full potential. Something really of note that happened on October 19, First Steps Kent was invited to present at the NACO convening on that day. There were only three communities across the country that were selected, and one was Kent County, and we were very proud to present at that event for NACO. I have two stories to tell you today. One I'll tell you now, and another a little bit later in the presentation. It's really important to understand what these early childhood services are and what they bring to young children and their families. Through the millage, we're able to fund services like play-in learns, and you would think, well, it sounds like playing, but it's so important to make sure that two- and three-year-olds are participating in developmentally appropriate activities, and making sure that they're participating in those activities with their parents or caregivers. So at times, it could be a mom or a dad, it could be an auntie or a grandmother, grandfather, coming to the play-in learns that are all over the county, and in particular, at schools, at churches, at libraries, and they bring children together to do activity stations developmentally appropriate for where they are at their ages, and making sure that their caregivers understand how important those activities are. So my story is about a little one named Abby. She was two years old, and she was going to the play-in learns with her mother, and her mother was really interested in making sure that Abby got activities and stimulation and able to do play with other children. At those play-in learns, we had retired teachers. So at this one in particular was a retired teacher named Susan, who had taught kindergarten for many, many years. She'd seen children who were ready for kindergarten, children who were not ready for kindergarten, and she noticed each week when Abby showed up for the play-in learns that there were some impairments. They were vision impairments that Abby was exhibiting, but her mother and her family hadn't noticed them yet. And Susan was able to intervene in a very warm way with her mother, not to scare her, but to say, there are ways we can test Abby's vision and make sure that she's able to get the right treatment, to make sure that she's able to catch up developmentally, and that is exactly what happened. Susan made the referral, and Abby and her mom were able to see a specialist, and Abby had to wear a patch for a little while, but eventually she caught up. And that is the importance of these early childhood funds and making sure that our children are receiving these services that they need. So when I talk about the importance of early childhood investment, we have done some research, and I know Commissioner Steck has asked me many times, and in particular, three years ago when we were before this body, about this return on investment, what it means to a community. So every dollar invested in early childhood delivers a 13% annual return on investment, compared to a 7% to 10% return with preschool alone. So the services that we're talking about really enhance that. The earlier we intervene, the better. And there is a researcher at the University of Chicago named James Heckman, and he's been researching early childhood and that investment, and what that means to a community with that return, and so that's where some of these data points come from. About the Ready by Five Millage, it's really important to kind of hearken back to those days, three years ago, when we came before the body that is here now, to ask if we could be on the ballot to raise dedicated funds for early childhood here in Kent County. And, you know, I really have to thank the Board of Commissioners for the support we did receive. So we were successful in November of 2018, and the millage raises $5.7 million a year, and the timeframe is 2019 to 2024, and that would be $35 million in total. Programs that are available through the millage to families, they help parents find and get connected to the resources they need, some that I mentioned, prevention programs that promote healthy pregnancy and births, developmental screenings and connection to early intervention supports, identification of blood hazards in the child's home, programs that promote early literacy and learning, agencies working to identify the root causes of infant deaths, translation and interpretation services, and initiatives to increase child safety, like automobile safety, car seats, and safe sleep programs. At this point, I'd like to bring forward my colleague Heather Boswell, and she'll take you through the next couple slides.
Good evening, everybody. We just want to take a moment and talk about the need here in Kent County. Of the 51,500 children here in Kent County that are through the age of five, approximately 19% of children live in households with the income below the federal poverty level, and this is throughout the entire county. As we break these numbers down by race and ethnicity, we find that Black or African-American children are the most affected, followed by Hispanic or Latinx children. We see from these numbers and further analysis that children in all areas of Kent County would benefit from services in the city, in the suburb areas, as well as there's a need for increased access in the rural parts of Kent County as well. The first Ready by Five Millage contracts, this is a new initiative, so the first contracts with service providers went into place March 1 of 2020. Executive orders related to the COVID-19 pandemic went into place 20 days later, March 20, 2020. There was significant impact on services beginning and ramping up due to this reason, and utilization in 2020 was lower than anybody could ever predict. But through the first half of 2020, what we're seeing is an increase in utilization of services. We have a graph here, the blue bars that show the number of children and expecting parents that were enrolled in the various services in 2020, and we have the orange and green. These are the numbers for the first half of 2020. We're working on quarter three data here today. So the orange shows the number of new children enrolled, and if you combine this with the green, it shows the total engaged. So the green may include individuals who have returned for additional services since the last year. The valuable thing about these services is how they support the early development and health of our children, of our youngest children here in Kent County, and also connect families to the greater systems and supports and programs that support families. So we've included the top list of referrals that these early childhood programs have been assisting families with. So the most connected services that we see families connected with include childcare, early intervention, when there's a developmental concern identified, preschool, and programs that support the various social determinants of health. So with that summary, I'm going to send it back over to Anne Marie, who will wrap us up here this evening with one more story.
I promised two children two stories. The next story is about home visiting and the really positive impacts that can come from that, and it concerns a little guy named Kyle. As a baby, Kyle was having difficulty feeding, and his mom was noticing that, much more than with her other children, Kyle was really struggling at, you know, feeding times with his bottle. She was able to get home visiting services, and the experts that are able to come out and counsel families, talked to the mom about making sure that Kyle could get feeding therapy. And you wouldn't necessarily think of that off the bat, but the feeding therapy helped Kyle catch up. There were other challenges that Kyle faced, and some had to do with his musculature and a myopathy that he had that was unusual, but it was keeping him delayed in some aspects. And home visiting also helped there, where he was recommended for physio... And home visiting also helped there, where he was recommended for physical therapy, but not just external. The home visiting helped his parents understand what they could do to help Kyle. And that is the most important thing when we think about early childhood services, that parents are right there eager to learn and understand, but sometimes, they don't have the support networks that some people are fortunate to have and others are not. So these are positive cases and important things to think about. So at this point, I'd like to just make sure that, as you look up at this slide, there are parents who have really given us feedback across all of Kent County through the programs that are offered. And they really let us know that these funds and these services are so important to making sure that we have a healthy, viable community, and that one day, these young children will be part of our viable workforce and a big part of our economy. So I'll stop there, and hopefully, we can take any questions you might have. Thank you.
Great. Any questions tonight? Commissioner Bolkowski.
Thank you, Chair. Definitely thank you, Anne Marie and Heather, for your work and the work of your staff. This year, I won't embarrass your co-chairs, Kate Walters and Lou Chamberlain, like I did last year by singling them out for community gratitude. So I didn't do that, because again, they represent a huge backing of our community for this effort. So again, no thanks noted this year. Oh, sorry. That being said, you know, I have many theories about nonprofit management. And one of them is, the worst thing for a nonprofit is to lose funding. And probably the second worst thing is to get too much new funding too fast. And so with this, you know, great influx of the funding, how have you seen the nonprofit partners able to ramp up these services? And any warning signs along those lines?
Great question. And I think Heather touched on it a bit, but you're absolutely right. It takes a little bit of time to build capacity, and it's always that old adage that says, be careful what you wish for. Even though you need it, you really must allow organizations to build to capacity. And that's exactly what we have done. And we have seen that, as the programs have grown, the need is there. And if you recall, in 2017, First Steps released our gap analysis, really kind of showing where the gaps were in early childhood here. And we were only covering about one-third of the need at the time. And now, as we see, and that's not population, that was truly the need that was out there, now we are reaching that. And we're getting ready. And I think, you know, you may remember, probably a couple of weeks back, we put before you our allocation for evaluation of our programs. And we're gearing up to do that, to show the impact and be able to show the services that are going out to the community and what that impact is.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Thank you again, Anne Marie, for your report. It's much appreciated. As a public body responsible for the health, safety, and welfare of all of our community, we realize how important these programs are in advancing those objectives. Of course, we are also fiduciaries of taxpayer funds. And so it is equally important for us to understand that rate of return. So I appreciate you commenting on that. I recall reading Dr. Heckman's reports back then, and I think you've a little bit understated it. As I recall, it was almost $2 returned to the community for every dollar, and maybe even in some studies, $3 returned to the community for every dollar invested in these programs. And so in the long run, all of the monies that we spend in these critical areas like healthcare and education and juvenile justice are all impacted by the effective use of these programs. And in the long run, this is really prudent expenditures of the taxpayer funds. So I appreciate your report, continuing to watch it, and look forward to hearing more.
Thank you. Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to echo the sentiments of Commissioner Steck. Effective and effective. I am so appreciative. I don't know how Heather and Anne Marie put all of the, that we have to, everything we have to do into a matter of few days. But you don't waste our time. You make sure that we have all the proper information. So thank you so much. There are so many lives. I mean, you're changing lives, and it just feels good to be part of your team. So thank you very much. And Lou and Kate, I will single you out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for that presentation. My question has to do with, I read a lot about the rise of autism with kids. And I know that can be a pretty tricky diagnosis, because there's other things that mimic that. And when I think about Ready by Five, you probably run across a lot of cases with the in-home visits, maybe parents that were unaware. And I'm wondering if there's a report or anything that you guys will be coming out with in the future to help people diagnose, be aware of, maybe not help diagnose, but it's a tricky subject. And what help is out there for these kids? I think the earlier, the better for treatment. I was just wondering how you guys are handling the uptick in the, and has it always been out there, we just didn't know it? Or is it something causing the rise in autism?
I think there is a rise. And when I was just researching the situation for little Kyle that I talked about, that situation where there is difficulty feeding and there is a need for feeding therapy has actually increased substantially. Not all of those cases are autism, but many are.
Commissioner Coleman.
Good, Chair. I'm pleased to see the comments on this slide. And really, it goes to show, the model of reaching and supporting children is really through the parents, which I think is, you know, the exact right approach. I'm curious if we do anything with the programs to target or help those children that are in the foster care system, and their parent or guardian may be different from year to year, month to month?
Great question. And what we are able to do with these dedicated funds is really be nimble enough to understand when there is a need. And so what I will say, one that came up were translation services, and then the other was the foster care system. And being able to partner, and when I talk about that, it is really navigating these systems and making sure that families are able to access services. So when it comes to foster care, making sure that we add entities like West Michigan Partnership for Children to the navigation. And I think that is going to be essential, and we have done that.
Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. I first will obviously echo the thanks and appreciation that my colleagues expressed. I'm looking at the impact and reach slide and the connected referrals that you list. Over not just in the previous year, but in years past, since this millage has been in place, which of those services have you had the greatest difficulty making successful referrals for? I had a feeling. And...
Child care is a very close second.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Housing and childcare. All right. I just have one. Wondering if you are a family that meets the criteria in terms of your income, how do you get connected to the services? Are you, is it just the families that are in, getting served by DHHS? Is it, how are we reaching out to those families who maybe aren't in some sort of system but need the help?
I really appreciate your question, because from the beginning, this millage was meant to be for any child.
Okay.
And it certainly is. And we do need to grow the reach as we're ramping up. I think there've been questions about that. But certainly, the services are for any child. And growing those and expanding them is what's needed. And there can be children anywhere who will need these services. And some of the examples I gave, I think, are distinctly that, that anyone can use the Play and Learns or the home visiting.
Right. But how do you know about them? So like, how are we reaching those families? Or how are we advertising it or marketing it, I guess?
Yeah, absolutely. So one of the biggest pieces in the first round of funding was for navigation. And I know that's a term that's used a lot, but making sure that we knitted together all the entities that cover the entire county that do that outreach and make sure that parents are aware of the services that are provided.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you. All right. We are on to, thank you, guys. Wonderful. And hello, Lou and Kate. All right. We're on to item six, public comment related to agenda items only. Do we have anyone who wants to address us on an agenda item? All right. Seeing none, we are on to item seven, consent agenda. And I'll call on Commissioner Steck for a motion.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move approval of the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes of October 28, 2021, and the closed session on that date and the November 2, 2021 Finance Committee meeting.
Moved by Commissioner Steck, support by Commissioner...
Support.
Breevy, questions or comments on the consent agenda today? Mr. Bolkowski.
Do we have a moment to read the minutes of the closed session? Or when were we supposed to have done that?
By osmosis, I think.
Yeah.
I didn't know we had permission to open them.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thanks.
Been sitting here. Forty minutes.
Thirty seconds.
All right. Any questions? If we do have questions, we do have to go to a closed session, because they're closed session minutes. So...
If it's about the closed session.
If it's regarding closed session. So, okay. All right. Any other questions or comments on consent agenda?
Just a clarification.
Sure.
What's the role of the minutes? No one's publicly considered...
We're approving them.
We're approving them.
Like we approve any minutes. Like we approve minutes for anything.
Okay, so...
Larry, do you want to answer?
So I can answer that, Commissioner. So we're required, and the clerk is required, to keep minutes of every proceeding closed or open. And those have to be, you know, kept pursuant to that retention requirement. There could be a case in which there is an order, for example, from a court, to open those minutes for a particular purpose, for example, but it is a requirement.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Sparks. Commissioners Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 yes, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to item eight, resolutions. I'm calling Commissioner Breevy for the first motion.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move Resolution 106 of today's date, Community Development Federal Project Fund Program Income Appropriation from Kent County Community Action. Support.
Moved by Commissioner Breevy, support by Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments on Resolution 106? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 106, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 yes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 106 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to 8B, and I'll call on Commissioner Skaggs for a motion.
I move Resolution 107.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Steck. I move Resolution 107 of today's date, amendments to collective bargaining agreements regarding wage re opener from Human Resources.
Moved by Commissioner Skaggs, support by Commissioner...
Support by Wooden.
Wooden, questions or comments on Resolution 107 today? Commissioner Burl.
Yes. In our LHR meeting, I think, last week, I see we have these wage openers. Every other, I guess, board commissioner I've been on were opening wage, and we didn't open other items in the agreement. And I think, I don't know if the exact word was, well, we didn't have enough time, or we didn't want to open that can of worms. Well, we have, we have three contracts next year that opened totally, and we have six the following year. Would have been a fantastic time to maybe start evening these out a little bit, opening some of these details up, especially when we have a wage opener anyways in the contract. That always seems to be where people are at. So I guess going forward, I'd love to see some of these things start to get, again, we have the time to open them up, let's open them up. Again, great opportunity to do it, and I think we missed the boat. A lot of people, I thought, probably had a lot of time this year to do that kind of stuff. So that's just something I'd like to see in the future.
Great. Any other questions or comments on 107? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 107, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Sparks. Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 yes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 107 is adopted.
Great. We are on to 8C, and I'll call on Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move Resolution 108 of today's date, the 2022 Management Pay Plan Compensation Program.
Court.
Moved by Commissioner Ponstein, support by Commissioner Morgan. Questions or comments on Resolution 108 today? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 108, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 yes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 106 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to item eight, resolutions. I'm calling Commissioner Skaggs for a motion.
I move Resolution 107.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Steck. I move Resolution 107 of today's date, amendments to collective bargaining agreements regarding wage re opener from Human Resources.
Moved by Commissioner Skaggs, support by Commissioner...
Support by Wooden.
Wooden, questions or comments on Resolution 107 today? Commissioner Burl.
Yes. In our LHR meeting, I think, last week, I see we have these wage openers. Every other, I guess, board commissioner I've been on were opening wage, and we didn't open other items in the agreement. And I think, I don't know if the exact word was, well, we didn't have enough time, or we didn't want to open that can of worms. Well, we have, we have three contracts next year that opened totally, and we have six the following year. Would have been a fantastic time to maybe start evening these out a little bit, opening some of these details up, especially when we have a wage opener anyways in the contract. That always seems to be where people are at. So I guess going forward, I'd love to see some of these things start to get, again,
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have eighteen yes, zero nays and one abstention. The motion passes. Resolution 109 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to number nine of our agenda, public comment related to general county matters. We have quite a few folks here today, and we have the cards, so the clerk will call those like we've been doing. You have three minutes.
Yes, Madam Chair. I do have cards. They begin at number fifteen, but as everybody knows, this does not preclude anybody from speaking if there is no card. First, we have Dwayne American. Sorry, Dwayne, an American.
I appreciate you guys recognizing that we're using the card system. We had an incident the other day at one of the school boards where somebody was required to give their name, and they did, and for over a week, they were getting nothing but hate messages on their emails and their Facebooks. So, I would request that we never change that rule. If somebody has a question for this board, they have every right to put their name on a piece of paper and hand that to the clerk, and they can give their contact information that way. Couple accolades. Flag etiquette. Several weeks back, I made a mention of the flag etiquette in this building, and apparently somebody overheard me, and I appreciate that. So, the flag is now placed correctly, and I thank you whoever took that action. Some email discrepancies. I've emailed Madam Chair a couple times, and I've also CC'd a couple other chairpersons here, but I've gotten messages back that the board members who I CC'd did not get that email. I don't know if emails have been changed, email addresses, and I'm going to follow up on that, but if you can tell me in some future date if the emails have been changed, I appreciate it. The only other thing I've got to say at this point in time is, Madam Chair, we had a discussion, whereas your clerk asked me to go to the legal department to get an answer, and I want everybody here to understand that when we ask you a question, this board, it is up to you to answer the public. Not up for your board, it's not up to the clerk to tell me to go to a third party to get an answer. So, whoever corrected that, I appreciate it. Madam Chair, you did respond. I appreciate that you had done that. I don't have anything other than that to bitch about tonight, but I'll be back.
All right. Next, we have Mike, and I'm not even going to attempt the last name. You can.
It's okay. That's Loix.
I was way off.
That's all right. Hello, everybody. Yeah, my name's Mike Loix. First of all, I just want to thank you for what you do. Frankly, I don't know what you do, but I do want to thank you because I'm sure there's a lot that you do. And simply because I just haven't looked into really politics and community as much as maybe I should. But the last year's really changed things for me and for a lot of people. So, last time I spoke, which was a big room, we had a lot of people speak, and it was about four hours. So, I was one of those Papa Bears. At the time, I called myself a Mama Bear. I'm not a Mama Bear, I'm a Papa Bear. So, I live in Ada, four kids, in a Horstel School District, and really, the thing I want to ask you is, what's happening with these mandates that came from Adam London? Are they best for our kids? And there's a question about ethics, and we found some information. I don't have all the details, but I'm really concerned about what I've heard and what I've seen. August 6, K through 6 were masked up, quarantine, contact tracing, a lot of really important things. Twenty months ago, I'd say most of us didn't know what was going on. We know a lot more now. I would just ask that you realize, I heard a lot today about, again, praying for the well-being of all. I would just like you to think about and look into how that mandate came about from Adam London. Was it ethical in your eyes? If each of you can look at the documents yourselves and look in your heart, and look yourself in the mirror and say, you know what, everything that took place with this mandate was above board, was perfectly ethical. That would do me a lot as a Papa Bear, because I have four children that, really, I'm taking care of with my wife. So, I'd ask you to do that. I'm asking you that question, to really look at those mandates. Look at them closely if you haven't. You know, today it's about masks. I do look at the future a bit and wonder, is tomorrow about vaccines? I'm going to read you something. If you haven't heard about it with the mandates that are coming, apologize, I got to get my phone working here. FDA voted seventeen and zero, this is last week, an authorization of the Pfizer COVID vaccine from five to eleven. If you haven't seen this quote, it's true. Quote, "The FDA panel said, quote, 'We're never going to learn about how safe the vaccine is until we start giving it.' That's just the way it goes." So, again, I would ask you to look in your hearts, look at this data. I know it's not today, but it could come our way, and I'd like you to think about the children. One of the signs I see coming in was an option to wear a mask. Really, all I'm asking as a parent is to be the choice for my children. I don't believe it's the government's choice. I am here to stand, frankly, between you, if you can help me, with, if Adam London's a decision-maker, between what he's deciding, if he is the decider, I don't know that, to change his mind and look into the ethics. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Carol Van Covering.
Hello, I'm just a grandmother that's concerned about four grandkids who go to two separate schools. And on that same vein, I would like to say this, that God created government to carry out just laws, there to punish what is evil and to protect what is right. Rebellion to tyranny is obedience to God. To fight tyrants is biblical. The definition of tyranny is harsh, absolute, and unfair rule by a government, king or other ruler. The definition of our current president is this, wielding absolute unjust cruel edicts with abuse of power and control. I pray against every wicked agenda exposed in our schools over this state and our nation. God help us to keep fighting to take back the freedoms that God so richly bestowed on this country. With His help, we will. We are parents, grandparents, and all who care for children and how they are treated. We reject what is being taught in our schools, twisting history, teaching sexual perversion, division because of color. All of that is a lie. I ask everyone who claims Christ to pray and seek His face to have mercy on this nation and to restore our great republic. Isaiah 40:28-29, "Do you not know, have you not heard, the everlasting God, the Lord, the Creator of the ends of the earth, does not become weary or tired? His understanding is inscrutable. He gives strength to the weary and to him who lacks might. He increases power." We can't grow weary in this fight for freedom for this country. I am concerned that my kids and my grandkids will live in communism unless we turn this around. We should not have to fight for freedom in our own country. This is the United States of America, but it's slowly, it's fast turning into Russia. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sean.
You want the card or?
Don't need the card, thanks.
I've been here before. I wish I wasn't back. It's amazing to me that we're still talking about mandates. You know, I love all the references to the Bible, right? I love the opening invocation, nice job, but I found I was gritting my teeth by the end of it, because so much of what you were saying and so much of what I wanted to feel, the joy in my heart at being an American citizen, was, is now devoid, right? Because of the mandates, because of the fact that we have walked in lockstep with a federal government that has led us astray over the last two years. Factor in for a moment that this is COVID-19, and we're about to enter 2022. Factor in that today, in the Senate testimony, the Director of the CDC refused to answer how many people in her government entity were unvaccinated. The estimate is seventy-six percent of them. The estimate is, is that more than eighty percent of them have not returned to work yet. How many of us have that same choice? I also like the fact that you mentioned that the Board of Commissioners is the hub of local government, right? You guys have that honor. You guys have that burden of responsibility. Why in heaven's name are we still listening to a health department, right, that has led us astray so many times? When you go back and look at these emails, all the correspondence that flew back and forth between Adam London and the superintendents of the school districts, how can it sit well with you guys that a just decision was made? When you look at this board right here, what's the common thread on this board that you guys are super proud of and you have every right to be proud of? It's that the government entities funded local institutions and partnered with parents. What's missing in that from the mandates that we're experiencing right now? Why is it not the parents' choice to avail themselves of the information that is available to us all? Is it not painfully apparent that the narrative on this pandemic is broken? And yet, what are you guys doing? You got our youngest, most developmentally challenged in masks. My two kids are autistic. The masks ruined them over the last year, and my kids are eighteen and twenty-one. Having helped these poor little kids in the ready-by-five, right, who are just trying to figure things out and can't see an entire lower portion of a face to derive any congruence between what someone is registering, what someone is speaking to them, and correlate that to an emotion, my kids wouldn't have made it at that age. So, applaud yourselves for the stuff you're doing right. Hold yourselves accountable for the things that you're not getting right, because we are watching. We're not going away anymore. And I hope that I keep doubling as many, I try to get people down here, and I'm going to keep doing that, because the time of sleeping on local government is past.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Carol Phelps.
Unless somebody's pretending to be Carol Phelps.
I'll start with a question for the board. Are any of you concerned with the direction the country is going? I know I am. This country was founded on the word of God, and that is why it is the greatest country in the world. People from other countries come here to escape communism and socialism. We, the people, do not want those things here, and the mandates and ideologies you guys are pushing are leading us down that road as we speak. I believe you know that I don't, I believe you know, sorry, a little nervous. I believe you know that, but you don't care. But I assure you, communism will affect you just as it will us. We will all be at the bottom of the barrel together, suffering with not enough food, poor housing, nor heat, no heat to keep us warm. The elites in this country are only a few, a very few, and if you think helping them with their agenda will further your careers, think again. I assure you, we, the people, have woken up, and you will soon be seeing more and more of what's happening in Virginia. We are not going to stop. This is a fight of good versus evil. We need God back in the country, and people are praying around this nation for exactly that. Our nation has turned its back on God, but thanks be to God, because in His word, it says, "If my people who are called by My name will humble themselves and pray and seek My face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven, and I will forgive their sin and heal their land." 2 Chronicles 7:14. For the remainder of My time, if anyone would like to join Me, let's pray for our country together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for our founding fathers who shaped this nation on Your word, and for the freedom You have blessed us with because of this. We ask for forgiveness for a nation that has turned its back on You. Bring us back to Your will and Your perfect ways. Lord, we ask that all willful workers of wickedness be removed from positions of power, prominence, and prestige. Open the eyes of those being deceived and place people who stand for Your righteous cause in high places of government and influence. We pray for courage for parents and teachers to stand against mandates and evil ideologies that hurt children. We ask for protection for them as they stand up for what is right. God, please protect our children. God, Your Word says in Matthew 18:6, "If anyone causes one of these little ones, those who believe in Me to stumble, it would be better for them to have a large millstone hung around their neck and to be drowned in the depths of the sea." Lord, show this board here the seriousness of hurting your children. Soften their hearts and humble them. Give them wisdom and discernment in keeping our children safe and protected. And please, God, open the eyes of all in this nation. Expose the evil being done and reveal the truth. Give us all courage to stand against tyranny and defend our freedom. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we have Nick Prill.
So, I was here a couple weeks ago. I handed you guys all Constitution to remind you of where you get your power from and what your obligations are in your duty of office. You guys are here to lead. You have all of the power in the county, right here in these nineteen individuals. You get it from all of us out here and everybody else in this community. You're to lead by example. You have an employee who has lied to you. You have an employee who has been insubordinate. You have an employee who has colluded with outside organizations. You have an employee who has made up threats and dragged you around your barnyard to get you to issue a statement condemning violence. Did you look in to see if those threats were even real? Because I did. I FOIA'd it all. Your sheriff wrote you guys a statement saying, "There are no credible threats on the record," but yet you quickly jumped up to condemn violence. I understand that the state, the power that Adam has to issue the mandate comes from the state, and your hands are tied, but your hands are not tied when you have an employee who is doing unprofessional and unethical behaviors, and you have a duty under the oath of your office to investigate that, to address that, and to remove that problem. This isn't a partisan issue. I'm calling on both sides. There is no reason that you guys should not be looking into this. We've done your job as your constituents. We've reported it to you as well. What are you doing about it? Wayne asked a question about you guys getting back to us. I also asked a question of this board two weeks ago when I was here. I haven't heard back on that. So, are you here with open ears and open hearts and open minds when we're talking, or are you just here to sit back, let us talk, let it go in one ear and out the other? Will you worry about your next election or your pension from the county? Because I'll tell you what, we're not going anywhere. Look at what happened in Virginia. Pissed-off parents make a difference. You've got a bulk of this community that's pissed off. You need to step up to the plate, do your jobs, look into these issues, and fix them. That's what you're here to do. And if you don't have the fortitude to do it, the door is right there. You can gladly resign your positions, and we will bring people in who will uphold their oaths of office. Thank you.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, that's all the cards we have?
Okay, so that's all the cards we have. Anyone else wish to address the board in public comment for three minutes? Come on up.
Since you didn't though for the minutes, can we at least get your name, or if you want to write something down, that's fine too. Thank you. I just wanted to give a snippet of what, so we're just, I have a seventeen-year-old that just recently went under pressure, and I'm just trying to understand what has happened over this past few years to watch a bright, thriving teenager go from that to this. And I have two and five-year-olds in Comstock Park Schools, entering the school district, and watching this ready-by-five speech as well, is looking at all of your eyes light up at getting these kids ready, at getting these kids that need extra support in our community. And, you know, part of our struggle in our district, and I know it's there for others, is the busing. And so, these buses are jam-packed because we have less bus drivers. The bus drivers are sick of everything that's happening. Their hearts are torn between the federal mandates, of course, you know, that's kind of separate from here, but we have two girls in our neighborhood that stopped riding the bus. So, this week, we experienced the bus driver not showing up because they think that, you know, and I know this is more of a school board issue, but I just want to let you a little insight of what's going on on the local level here. So, to just have, luckily, my husband was working from home, so he was able to take the girl to school. But, you know, I just can't imagine the other parents and their frustrations in trying to get these needs that are supposed to be just everyday needs, right? And then having stories from our children that those in power are going on the buses and yelling at them about their masks falling off. And the one girl in particular in our neighborhood that stopped riding the bus is because she kept getting yelled at. I mean, and I watched these kids get on the bus and off the bus every day, and just looking at, you know, they're just little kids. They're trying their best, and if we don't... And if we don't set the tone at this level, at all the levels... And when I go to my board, our school board, and I hear them say that their hands are tied and they're worried about getting misdemeanors, and I just want to say to you and to them that we're here to back you up. We're here, when you guys are ready to make that change with us, and, you know, I'm obviously parent pro-choice here, but we're here to back you up. That's why we put you in this position, that we're trusting that you guys are going to do what we put you in this power to do and speak on behalf of us. But also, when you guys are in a position where you're being strained by a higher authority, I'm not really sure what's going on. I'm trying to understand. And I feel like we just keep getting the door shut on us. And my board, our school board, just keeps saying, "Go here, go there." But I just want to let you know that we're here to back you up. And if you guys just take some time to follow through with some of these folks that have questions, as well as help back up our school boards, I mean, because we're going to see a major issue that's going to be beyond this repair of Ready by Five. Because my five-year-olds are in there. And how is this going to affect them over the next few years? I mean...
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else today? All right. Seeing none, we'll go on to Item 10, Administrator's Report. Al, anything besides the budget today?
Just a couple items. Yesterday, I testified with Senator Brinkes before the Senator Probst Committee. Yesterday, I did testify before the Senator Probst Committee with Senator Brinkes on the bill to convey the ownership of the former MSP lab, Michigan State Police Forensics Lab, on the Fuller Campus to Kent County. It did pass through the committee unanimously, and now it moves on through the process. But obviously, that's important for us as we plan for the future of county services and for growth in county services. And then also, today, met with the three legislators on Lansing County project and funding priorities. So that's all for today.
Great. On to Item 11, Official Commissioner Reports. Do we have reports today? Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I want to report on the Grand Valley Metro Council that met. And one of the highlights that I want to share that impacts the entire board was from Andrea Faber, who was a transportation planner. So...
It's a little scary when you're bringing a box.
It's okay. It's a good box.
Making sure.
It's...
You're going to be scared when we start.
So they have been working on bike safety, pedestrian safety. They've been partnering with Riding for Ryan. If you're not familiar with this group, five days before his seventh birthday, Ryan died from injury sustained on a bike-truck accident. So Riding for Ryan provides bike flags. And the Grand Valley Metro Council has these reflective walking belts, bike lights, and very exciting snap-on wristbands. I waited all day to do that, by the way. And I have an example for each of you. So as you go to board meetings and go back to your districts, if you want to connect with them, to connect with Grand Valley Metro Council, these are available. They do, like everything else, run out if they don't have anything right now. They do have some in stock. So if you connect with them, they'll be able to get you these to help get them out into the community. A number of our local communities have been partnering with them, but they are looking to get the word out even more because they really have a mission to try to keep our walkers and bikers safe. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Brevi.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. The last couple days, we hosted our finalists from the Sustainable Business Park. And the Board of Public Works heard from the leaders from Continuous and Energia today. And I just wanted to thank the commissioners who were able to attend the dinner that we had last night, and then also those who attended our meeting today. It's a learning opportunity for all of us as we go through this process. And I would encourage you, if you have questions, feel free to reach out to me or any other members from the Board of Public Works.
Commissioner Bukowski.
Thank you, Chair. To report, the Front of the Court Advisory Committee met on Monday. And the, you know, standard course of business, along with continuing to monitor the sheriff's work with the deputies as they do warrant enforcement. And, you know, the good news is that that work continues to go very well, so that the deputies continue to be well-trained and as they resolve the outstanding warrants without arrest. So that good stuff is happening. And then also, just to mention that the chair of that committee, Kyle Quinn, is being term-limited out. So to thank him for his service for many years.
Great. Any other... Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I had a chance to stand in and chair at the Kent County Community Action. And they do have funds for rental assistance. And just finding out that not only for rental assistance, they also have rental assistance for months back, as far as six months back, to help people. And just knowing that they have funds and they have new funds coming in, I just think is important for the public to know that. Now that the moratoriums on rent have been lifted across the United States of America, it's just great to know that Kent County and the state of Michigan are doing all they can to help residents.
Any other official reports today? Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Just a quick report. This past week, I was able to attend the CMHA conference in Traverse City, where Mr. Bolter gave a presentation. I'm not sure who that might be. At any rate, it was a great conference. It's interesting to learn, as we hear from the state director, that a fair number of the key initiatives and interests of the state are following up on the very kind of programs that we're doing here in Kent County. And so we are in track and moving forward. At the same time, we continue to have a huge piece of litigation hanging over our head in the region, and that is not yet resolved. So this is supposedly the month in which we either resolve or press on with a trial against the state. And not a fun place to be, but inevitably, that's where we are.
Never good news out of the yell.
Yeah.
Never happy. Any other official reports today? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to miscellaneous. I'll remind board members that you need to address the chair per our rules, and you have a five-minute limit. You can speak twice, though. So any official miscellaneous today? Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. I, first of all, want to celebrate passing the approval for children to get the vaccine, which, as we know, is the end of the mask mandate. Now we have insight because it's available, and it's wonderful to see how fast it is getting distributed to doctors so that parents who want it can get it for their kids. I just also want to mark that a landmark in our COVID history here in Kent County was passed, I'm pretty sure since our last meeting, which was 1,000 deaths in Kent County. And I think we got there a little faster than I thought we would. But that's just a very significant number, I think. And I really hope that we are climbing our way out of it. But I just want us to remember all the families in our community who are impacted by that.
Any other miscellaneous today? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. So I think at the last meeting, I had requested, some from the audience had requested something from the board, and I think it was regarding the forensic audit. And I know at my table, or everyone's table, there's a response from the clerk from that to you. And I'm just wondering, has the person that requested also got a copy of this?
I just got it today, so I think it's... We can share it.
No, but the person that requested it from the audience.
It's me, and I haven't heard anything.
So, you know, I keep hearing this, then, there was a lady at the last meeting, too, that was requesting something. Being in public service as long as I have, I know why we don't allow commissioners to engage with the public during public comment. But we've got to start tracking, because I'm hearing over and over again, people in the audience are asking questions, and they never get a response. We need to put in place a log with who speaks and what they ask, and keep county commissioners aware who and who hasn't been responded to. I think that's just a courtesy to the people that come to public comment. On another note, I just wanted to send condolences out to an old friend and a longtime employee of the city of Granville. Ron Carr was the TPW director there, who died this past couple weeks. And he was a partner with all cities, townships, the county. And I admired his work ethic, but more his love of the city of Granville and the work that was put forward. Second of all, or third of all, I've been getting some calls lately, and this is a question, I guess in a broader sense. We've been fighting this thing called COVID for two years, and it's taken the breath out of everything. That's the main thing we talk about. But I'm starting to getting calls from people, and two of these, and it's not reflective of the Health Department, but they had issues to do with the Health Department. I had a lady who called me who was bitten by a raccoon, and telling me the time on the phone just to get an answer. She finally got someplace, because there was an argument over whether the county does it or Spectrum does it. So she got the one shot. I followed up with her and asked her if she's gotten the second shot. And she told me, you know, it just got too complicated, waiting on the phone for an answer, being moved here and here. I don't know if we're short-staffed like the private sector is. I haven't heard that we're short-staffed. But the one that hit home today is I had a lady who was trying to help before an exchange student who lost the home to stay here to continue the education. She spent 25 minutes on the phone in the Health Department with not anyone responding to her. She finally hung up because she couldn't wait any longer. I mean, if those are our wait times to get the general public answers to questions, then we've got a more serious problem than COVID. And we've got to redirect our resources into serving our constituents. Because as I heard from the Ready by Five, is a word that they don't want to use, is navigate. That's the number-one problem for the people I represent. And the calls I get is navigating the county system. And that's something I think we have to work on. And then finally, I've talked about this before, and my time on this earth and in public service is much farther behind me than ahead of me. But the issue of four-year terms is coming up. I think this is the last shot that Mac's going to spend time on this issue, because it always comes down in the end, someone with a partisan issue. I mean, we lined up leadership in the Senate and the House of Representatives. The governor said if it was on a presidential year, she would back it. The reason for four-year terms isn't that it's going to enrich me. It's not. But county commission seats are getting more and more expensed to run for a salary that sometimes is half of the money that you spend. But forget about that for the big counties. It's the smaller counties, and the UP, the upper part of the lower peninsula, that are having people run for public office, especially county commission seats. So I ask you to reach out. I've got the names of all the committee members of the final House Committee that can, has to vote on this, to forward it to the full House. And, you know, do what you want, but just remember, county commissioners, when we were created, the original was four-year terms, and it was the government that reduced it to two. So thank you for your time.
Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of quick things. First of all, I've been thinking about and talking to a number of people about what Vice Chair Steck recently called a very perplexing issue, this whole state, you know, budget, boilerplate, you know, all of this, you know, the politics behind it, all of that, and then how that impacts us here at Kent County. And at the very least, my perspective has been, let's do what we can and should do to be prudent fiscally and make sure that regardless of the outcome of any potential litigation on the issue, any, you know, political happenings of the state, that we end up taking care of, you know, the fiscal policies here at Kent County. And so I very much appreciated seeing the memo, Administrator Vanderberg, that you sent out, and just those details, you know, the... And thankfully, we're in a situation where, you know, with $5.9 million, you know, extra in the Health Department budget going into next year, you know, that's a significant, I think, 24% increase. Like, there's plenty of money there to be prudent with the potential funds that are at risk. And so I genuinely appreciate that we're doing that. Secondly, with the news today, you know, with the rule getting finalized, federal government, OSHA-level mandating vaccines for large employers, just wanted to take a moment, you know, certainly, there has been many times in our country's history, great debate about, you know, immunization, vaccination, Supreme Court's case on it, you know, Jacobson versus Massachusetts, I think, you know. Does the public protection merit mandating vaccines? And that's a debate that I would come down on the side of. There always needs to be an exception for those with strong personal or religious beliefs, that there's exceptions. In the case of the COVID vaccines, I think we're seeing very clearly that these vaccines don't have the properties of some other vaccines in stopping community spread. We've got, I just looked it up before coming down, we've got in Michigan about 50 people a day ending up in the hospital with COVID. And about 15 or 16 of those are fully vaccinated, nearly a third. So it protects, you know, the vaccine, you know, the data, I think, is clear. For those that want to take it, it protects, you know, the person that takes the vaccine from severe sickness, hospitalization. But it does not seem to protect from community spread. And pushing a vaccine mandate through OSHA is just driving further and further this issue to cause problems in our country, staffing issues, shortages, et cetera. And I think it's a terrible idea. So thank you, Chair, for listening.
Commissioner Coleman. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Ditto's, Matt. I agree with you. And Al, thank you for your work. I appreciate that letter going out, and I think that's a sensible direction. Money's not going anywhere, so it's going to be set aside, just in case. Couple of things. I just heard about the threshold with thousands of deaths in Kent County. And I think it's really important to understand, those are people that died with COVID. They didn't die of COVID. And that's something that's been gamed by everybody. Dr. Fauci himself, back a couple years ago, said he thought about 40% of the COVID cases were... They weren't. They were, there were other things. But that's part of the narrative getting pushed, and that's what you got to do sometimes. So as bad as COVID is, it's a horrible thing, and I know people have died from it. And it is a terrible thing for certain people. We understand that, just like the flu and other things. But we got to be truthful in our assessment. And I wanted to thank all the parents out here in the audience, everybody. And I always do on both sides. It doesn't matter if they're beating me up or yelling at me or something. I like the fact that you're here. It's very important that we hear from you. I don't look at this group...
Point of order.
I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. I have a... Well, I'm thanking this crowd, so I wanted to acknowledge them. Okay. Anyhow, I don't look at parents, mama bears, papa bears, as terrorists. They've been called terrorists by our own FBI and at school board meetings. And, you know, we've even had our Health Department Director compare the parents to the FBI informants that were disguised as militia that were going to kidnap the governor. I think there was 10 or 11 of them. 12. But again, those things aren't ever talked about or brought up. And now we have the PSAs that are being played at nauseam, citing three times as many kids in the hospitals with COVID. And then you get to looking between the lines.
Madam Chair, I believe we've reached the five-minute period.
Are you really upset by this?
Get your next five minutes.
A little truth? A little truth? A little truth?
All right.
I'm addressing the chair.
All right. Point of order, stop. Please stop.
Amazing. Amazing. Two years ago, we had people flood in this room. You celebrated it. They came in here with signs and blowhorns. You celebrated it. You said, "That's democracy."
Point of order, you are to address the chair.
Hey, point of order, you can jump in a lake. That's my point of order. I'm saying something. Just because you can't handle the truth, why don't you keep your mouth closed?
Madam Chair, please.
All right.
Nobody wants to listen to you, Phil.
Tom, okay.
No, he pointed it up.
Tom, okay, we're good. We're good?
We give people extra time. I have a point to make. But if you're afraid of that...
Are we not following the rules that you stated, Madam Chair?
Yes, please follow the rules.
I think Antor's got the floor.
Yes, Tom Antor has the floor. Tom Antor, Commissioner Antor. Commissioner Antor, can you finish your comments?
Okay. I realize the truth is not what everybody in this room is all about. I believe there's an itinerary here, and there's a narrative. I'm going to keep fighting it. Thank you. I'm looking at you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Womack.
I want to thank our Vice Chair for starting out today's meeting with the intro and mentioning the unfortunate loss of Deputy Dave Cook. Just want to send my condolences, and I'm sure all the other commissioners do, also out to his wife and his two children. I know law enforcement is having morale problems across the United States, wondering if they true have support for some of the great officers and good officers out there. He was a good officer, and just want to continue to send my condolences out to that family.
Thank you, Commissioner Womack. Any other miscellaneous today? All right, seeing none. I have a couple of quick comments. Commissioner Coleman did mention the extra funds going to the Health Department. I think those are most likely earmarked for specific programs. But if we do have that, I would like our administrator to look into that and look into Commissioner Ponstein's comments about response times and staffing issues, and make sure that we are adequately supporting our community. I'd also ask our administrator, we'll start looking into making sure that everyone's requests are getting answered and a system to implement that. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention, it's my husband's birthday today, and I'm here with you all. So happy birthday to Alan Bolter.
Was that your present?
Yeah, that I was gone. Yes, I'm sure he loved it. All right, with that, I'll call Commissioner Steck for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move to adjourn, subject to the call of the Chair Tuesday, November 18.
Moved by Commissioner Steck. Support by Breevy. All in favor, say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.